Looks like the pastor's feed may have frozen, so. Perhaps we can move on to the Pledge of Allegiance and then maybe get back to the invocation.
Amen. I lost connection there, Mayor, sorry.
That's okay, Pastor. We did the Pledge of Allegiance, so we'll follow up with the invocation.
That's the issue with technology these days.
You gotta be on your toes.
Okay. Let's pray. Father God, we give thanks for this day. We ask that you would guide and direct everything that happens here tonight. I pray for those who are gathered here today in this meeting. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health that we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the Scriptures, Paul wrote to the Romans that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you, God, have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for our commissioners, and for those who are assembled here tonight. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. That you would grant them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people and our community. That you would grant them a keen thirst for justice and rightness. That you would grant them confidence in what is good and fitting. That you would grant them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. That you would grant them personal peace in their lives and in the joy at the work and their tasks that they are about doing today. Lord, I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what would please you, Lord, and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Largo. It is in the most blessed and precious name of Jesus Christ I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you for being here with us tonight. At this point, I'm going to read a, we had a closed-door meeting that was publicly noticed, and I'm gonna read this notice. Notice is hereby given that the Largo City Commission will meet in a closed-door session on Tuesday, August 4th, 2020, at 5:00 PM for approximately one hour to discuss pending litigation to which city is presently a party. David and Tina Chase versus City of Largo, case number 2017 CA 001445, which is presently pending in the Sixth Judicial Circuit and in, and in, and for Pinellas County, Florida. This meeting will begin with an open session at which the Chair of the meeting will announce an estimated length of the private session and the names of those attending, and then the session will be closed to the public pursuant to the Florida Statute, Section 286.011 (8). The closed-door session will be held by means of communications media technologies. At the conclusion of the private session, the Chair will reopen the meeting and announce the termination of the private session. The open portions of the meeting will be, can be accessed on Zoom and will be live streaming at City Hall. And, uh, which is at 201 Highland Avenue North, Largo, Florida, 33770. That meeting lasted approximately 45 minutes and is now closed, and we will now return to our regularly scheduled commission meeting for some ceremonial items. The first is recognition of the Good Citizen Campers for the Summer Camp 2020.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. This evening, I am pleased to recognize five children that are currently enrolled in our summer camp program. Although summer camp is different this year, and our enrollment is substantially lower than normal, the recreation staff have worked hard to incorporate safety measures into the day-to-day routines that allow families to have a level of comfort in registering their children in camp. This summer, our department has provided childcare for an average of 270 children a day in our full-day camps and an additional 40 per week in our half-day sports and specialty camps. The children being recognized tonight have been chosen as a citizen camper for their campsite. When selecting the citizen camper, staff members are asked to each nominate a child that shows respect to others, responsibility, and demonstrates safety in their choices. From the nature camp, we'd like to recognize Aiden Harvey. Aiden has been with the nature camp for three years. He has developed from a shy boy to a leader in the camp. He is always willing to give others a chance to play, even if it means giving up his own spot in an activity. For example, if someone is waiting to swing and all of the playground swings are being used, he will get off to give the person waiting a turn. If other children are being disruptive or lost interest in an activity, he will work hard to get them back on track by explaining ways the activity is interesting or even fun. Aiden has been a pleasure to have in nature camp this summer. From the Highland Recreation Camp, we have two citizen campers. The first one is Skylar Knopper. Skylar is respectful and friendly to all of the campers and staff. She arrives to camp each day with a smile on her face. This summer, Skylar noticed something about another camper that made her worry about the child's safety. She talked with the camper and confirmed that she had noticed was correct. She not only brought this to the attention of her mother, but also to the camp staff. The staff were able to work with the child through the situation, and her compassion for others and sense of responsibility helped assure another camper was able to get the attention they needed in order to enjoy the remainder of the summer. Skylar is a remarkable young lady and role model to her peers. Tiffany Page. Although Tiffany is only seven years old, she shows leadership traits on a regular basis in camp. Tiffany is regularly inviting others to play games with her and those that are having, that are having trouble losing. She is there to encourage them to keep trying. Tiffany keeps her eyes open for anyone that is not following directions or is making unsafe choices. She will either tell them directly what they are doing isn't safe, or she will bring it to the attention of a staff member. Tiffany follows the rules of camp and works hard to make any new camper feel welcome as part of the group. And at the Southwest Recreation Complex, we also have two citizen campers. The first one is Philip Tromble. Philip goes above and beyond to make sure everyone is happy at camp. He works hard to include everyone in the activities and never becomes argumentative or upset about losing. He follows expectations of camp and isn't afraid to remind others when they are not. He assists the leaders by carrying equipment and running errands throughout the day. He is a helping hand to both the staff and fellow campers. His big heart and sense of responsibility earn him the respect of others in camp. And Amir Habib Zadeh. Amir is getting, is always helping around camp. From offering to hold the door during transitions, helping with daily tasks, and making sure everyone has a seatbelt on during the field trip trips. He is the first person to comfort a camper if they are injured or if they are upset, and is everyone's friend when they need one. Amir always has a smile on his face and helps to make sure others do as well. Congratulations to each of these campers for being selected as the citizen camper by their directors.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was saying, some of us are silent clapping and some are, and my mute was on too, so. But thank you, Krista, for bringing this to us this year. I know it's a different year, but we're always excited to see the campers that blossom in our different facilities. So, so thank you for bringing them to us.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear Youth Leadership Council.
Yes, sir. This is gonna be me presenting this afternoon or this evening. You know, as you are all aware, every year, the Youth Leadership Council has a couple of outgoing seniors or, and we'd like to present them a little with a, little bit of a token of our appreciation. The Largo Youth Leadership Council has participated in civic responsibility, leadership and community service programs. The composition of this year's council includes two members who have served since the creation of the council in 2017. Cassandra Bernard and Mackenzie Ballseres. During their tenure with the Largo Youth Leadership Council, both Ms. Bernard and Ms. Ballseres served in leadership positions, including Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, and Historian in both. Cassandra and Mackenzie are graduates of Largo High, class of 2020. Go Packers! I'm gonna read a little bio for the both of these ladies, if you would. So Mackenzie is a graduate of Largo High, class of 2020, again, go Packers! While attending school, Mackenzie completed the academically rigorous Exploring Careers and Education and Leadership or Excel Program. From 2017 to 2020, Mackenzie was a member of the Largo Youth Leadership Council, where she served the role of Secretary and Historian. Mackenzie is planning to attend St. Petersburg College, and her goal is to pursue a college degree in dental hygiene. Next, we have Cassandra Bernard. Cassandra is a graduate of Largo High School, class of 2020 as well. She has also completed the Excel Program. She also participated in the Sophomore Council, Junior Council, and several National Honor Societies throughout her high school career. During her three-year tenure with the Largo Youth Leadership Council, Cassandra served in the capacity of Vice Chair and Chair. She is currently attending the University of South Florida in St. Petersburg. Her major is in Management Information Systems and hopes to become either a business analyst or project manager in the future. I just wanted to say congratulations to both of these fine young ladies. They were, you know, as I said earlier, involved in the council from the very beginning and have been instrumental in getting us to the point we are now, and they will be very much missed over the next couple of years. So thank you to both of those ladies for everything they've done for the Largo Youth Leadership Council over the past couple of years.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Robinson, for bringing this to us, and certainly we are proud of these young ladies. We've seen them both present here, well, not here virtually, but here for the City Commission on a few occasions, and we know that they're gonna go out and represent Largo very well in the world, so. So thank you for highlighting them tonight.
Thank you.
Next up, Diane will do a, our city clerk will do a drawing for a ballot position for the November 3rd municipal general election.
Thank you. As you know, our qualifying period ended at 5:00 last Thursday. The mayor's seat and Commissioner Robinson's seat were unopposed, so they're automatically reelected. We do have two candidates for Seat 3. Both of their names are in this bowl, and this will determine the order in which they're placed on the November 3rd ballot. And our city attorney will draw the names.
And the first name is Eric Gerard. And the second name is Curtis Holmes.
Thank you. And we'll place them in that order on the ballot.
Thank you. Next, we will have citizens' comments. If there's something that's, that is on the agenda outside of the consent docket, we will take your citizens' comment at that point. Do we have any cards or any, not cards, do we have any citizens' comments?
I have no citizens' comment at this time.
Okay, so we'll move on to approval of the agenda for this evening.
Mayor, I'd like to pull numbers seven.
I'd like to pull eight and nine. Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion, Commissioner Holmes, and second from Commissioner Fenger. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. The next is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of July 21st, 2020.
Shall move.
The motion and a second. Any corrections? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Could I hear the consent docket, please?
Item six, authorization to purchase an additional vehicle for the Recreation Parks and Arts Department from Duval Ford in accordance with the Florida Sheriff's Association Contract Number FSA 19-VEL27 and FSA 19-VEH17 in the estimated amount of $43,984. Item 10, approval of request to reduce RG's Bookmark Cafe rental fees by 50%, $325 per month, starting with June 1st, 2020 payment to coincide with decreased building occupancy.
You've heard the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent docket without commission discussion as outlined in the commission packets.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Item number seven, Commissioner Robinson.
Yes, sir. Hey, Mr. York, how are you doing today?
Good, very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, I don't really, I don't oppose this, this item more than I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to make a, make a comment regarding it. And I talked to the city manager in regards to this issue earlier today. You know, several years ago, there was, there was a hurricane that ran straight up the middle of Florida and obviously laid a path of destruction throughout the entire state. And when we were trying to do some cleanup around the city, it was very hard for us to do because a lot of the crews that we had contracts with went to other places because other places started paying more outside of their, whatever the contracted amount was, so. I understand that this is just an extension of an existing contract, and again, I'm not in opposition to it. I just want to make sure that when we move forward after this year or after this contract is over, that we make it a point to maybe try to have some sort of clause in there to where we have somebody for sure be able to pick our stuff up when we need somebody to pick our stuff up. And I, I mean, look, I understand, you know, we are in a peninsula. It's not very hard for a hurricane to take up a wide swath of Florida and create destruction, you know, in that, in that area. And I understand from their point of view, they were gonna go where they want to get the most money, but at the same time, it's our responsibility to make sure that we have people here to be able to start cleaning up in the city of Largo. So that was all, that was just, I just want to make sure that that's, you know, kind of put out there. Again, it's nothing against his contract, just moving forward after this, and I want to make sure that we're covered.
Okay. That's understood, and we will work with legal to see if we can get any clauses put into our next agreement when we go out for bid. The problem is, as we all know, it's, you know, five pounds of potato in a two-pound bag when it comes to something like this. We'll do, we'll do the best we can and get some, try to get some language in there. We'll work with Allen and his team to, as we get the RFPs put out on the, out on the street.
All right. Thank you, Matt. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions concerning this item?
I move to approve the renewal of the Free Management and Disaster Recovery Services with Ashbret Environmental, Crowder Gulf, Joint Venture Inc., JV Coxwell Contracting Inc., and DRC Emergency Service LLC for the second and final year renewal period.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Robinson, a second from Commissioner Carroll. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next is item number eight, Commissioner Holmes.
Thank you. Hey, Joan. Unmut yourself. Joan, you can't talk back to us. There you go. My only question is, the, under the budgetary information, it says the budgeted amount was $498,000, had availability of $387,000. We're spending $30,000 on this. But then it says, additional budgetary information. A portion of the remaining fund will be used to replace the playground structure at the Highland Recreation Complex. A, how much? B, this is reading singular. It says "the playground structure," only one structure? What are you gonna replace at Highland?
No, there are several playgrounds at Highland, and we've, we've already done some work on the preschool portion of the playground, which is a, which is a part of the rec center itself. The remaining money outside of this expenditure will be spent on the outdoor playground, both the 5- to 12-age area and a complete redo of the under-five age. So we are working now with three vendors on proposals for the actual playground structures. It's, yes, it's multiple structures.
Okay. Don't mind me. I'm very literate when I read these things, and this thing reads singular. When it says "the playground structure," that's all singular, so it's multiple. Right. That was my only question on this one.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve authorization to utilize the services of real construction resources to construct an outdoor shelter at the Highland Rec Complex in the estimated amount of $30,000.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next is item number nine, Commissioner Holmes.
Uh, this is for the record only. Anybody who reads this memo, who did not listen to our little private thing here, number one, I'm gagging on this, but the other side of the coin, when you start considering legal cost and the mitigations of this type of accident, I will vote in favor of this, and I will be gagging on it while I'm doing it because I'm one of these people, I, I would probably sue my own mother given the opportunity, but that's just me. I don't think this is right, but this is the path of least resistance, and it's probably in the long run, the cheap way out. That's my only comment.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion unless somebody has further comment.
That's all right. John Carroll's choking too. I move to approve the settlement with David and Tina Chance, Chance, in the amount of $100,000, subject to a full release being executed in the form, in the form approved by the city attorney.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next is item number 11, a development agreement.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm attempting to bring up a PowerPoint presentation. Apologize for the delay. This is a proposed development agreement between the City and Paradise Group LLC. And I am not able to pull up this PowerPoint presentation, but Paradise Group LLC is the contract purchaser of 4825 East Bay Drive, which is approximately 4.34 acres and located south of East Bay Drive, east of Newport Road, and west of Bedford Circle East. On January 21st, 2020, the commission authorized staff to negotiate the terms and conditions for this development agreement. The development agreement would allow for the property currently used as a religious institution to be redeveloped for predominantly retail commercial uses. Staff presented the proposed terms and conditions for the development agreement to the commission on May 19th, 2020, and they were approved to be formalized in the proposed development agreement we have this evening. The applicant is proposing to concurrently amend the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for the subject property from institutional to residential office retail. That is to be addressed in Agenda Item Number 19 this evening. This would enable the redevelopment of the site if it is approved. The specific terms and conditions in the development agreement include a concept plan with some flexibility allowing for, through the final site plan approval process, the exact and final number of buildings, square footage, location and design of the buildings, as well as driveway access points. Performance timelines are built into the development agreement, allowing for approximately three years to go through the site plan review process, final site plan approval, and secure permits. Restrictions are included for certain uses that are prohibited, deemed to be too intense or incompatible with the adjacent residential neighborhood. It includes buffering, landscaping, and building elevation and architectural design requirements that cover things including exterior materials that are appropriate, trash collection, design of loading docks, utility service areas. It includes coordination with PSTA for the potential location of a bus stop adjacent to the development site, internal circulation, sidewalks, and connectivity. Additional standards, if the total square footage of the site for the final site plan should equal or exceed 50,000 square feet, and a traffic study that will be required to determine the project's traffic impact and operational movements based upon what the final proposed site plan is and the specific retail uses. And this would require them, then, based on that evaluation by the city's engineering department and staff to construct any necessary improvements as needed to accommodate those impacts. We did have one resident from the adjacent Newport neighborhood speak at the planning board, sharing concerns about traffic impacts, so that specific item in the development agreement is included to address that. The development agreement was presented to the planning board on July 2nd, 2020, and recommended for approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions in my half.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Press?
I move to approve DA 20-001 Development Agreement between the city, the city of Largo, Florida, and Paradise Group LLC.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Next up is item number 12. Leave the future land use amendment.
Diane, we can't hear you. Can you hear us?
I believe Diane is the next two items. Give it a couple more seconds.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
On the last item, did you ask for?
On the last item, did you ask for citizen input?
That's a good question.
I didn't have any. Okay. I checked for hands up, telephone and email and I had none. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Woody, why don't you go to 14 and come back to these two?
That's, that's my plan. Um, we'll go ahead and move on to item number 14, we'll come back to 12 and 13. We have somebody, it looks like Isabella, is coming on for item number 14.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ordinance 2020-43 is second reading for the annexation of six properties. All requirements as specified in chapter 171 of the state statutes have been met, including the advertisements which were published on July 22nd and July 29th. The properties are contiguous to the city's municipal boundaries through previous annexations and together help to reduce the size of existing enclaves. The ordinance proposes to annex property that is compact as that term is defined in chapter 171 and are not enclaves. Therefore, it is staff's opinion that all of the properties may be annexed voluntarily in accordance with chapter 171. The Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners and Pinellas County Planning have been noticed and did not provide any objections. All city departments reviewed the, these annexations and indicated services can be provided to the property. Staff is available for any questions.
Ordinance number 2020-43, an ordinance of the city of Largo, Florida, annexing the within described tracts of land located at 1769 and 1767 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue and 1764, 1765, 1766 and 1768 Farrell Avenue, Pinellas County, Florida and contiguous to the existing city limits of the city of Largo, Florida, with city land use designation of residential urban, redefining the corporate boundary of the city of Largo to include said addition according to the provisions of chapter 171 Florida statutes, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, do we have any public input on this?
Um, I have no hands up and no emails. We do not.
Thank you, do we have any questions from the commission?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2020-43 on second and final reading.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Miss News, uh, we're gonna go back to item number 12 and, and 13, but we'll start with 12.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, apologize for the technical issues. I will, uh, make the presentation on behalf of staff. This item is a second reading for a future land use map amendment uh, at 2188 58th Street North. Uh, the proposed change is from institutional to commercial. The applicant's intent is to expand, uh, redevelop the existing, uh, 711 located on Roosevelt, on the north side, uh, immediately, uh, west of 58th Street. Uh, the item came before you for first reading on May 5th, 2020, uh, and then went to Ford Pinellas and the city wi, or the countywide planning authority and was approved by the countywide planning authority on July 21st, 2020. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Ordinance number 2020-16, an ordinance of the city of Largo, Florida, amending the city of Largo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Classification of the within described tract of land located at 2188 58th Street North from institutional parentheses I to commercial general parentheses CG, consistent with the city of Largo Comprehensive Plan, amending the city future land use map on file in the office of the city clerk pursuant to the provisions of chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes and the Pinellas Countywide Plan Rules, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, do we have any public input on this?
Uh, we have none.
Any questions on this item? Commissioner Holmes.
Hey, hey Rick, is this the one they want to put a car wash behind the 711?
Uh, I believe the current concept that they have does include a 711. Uh, the existing 711 is, um, dated to, to say the least and it's adjoining with an existing, uh, building. Uh, Joe's, Joe's Bar, I believe. Uh, so they want to separate from that building and create a more modern, uh, footprint for 711. That would include a car wash.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, any other questions?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2020-16 on second and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next is item number 13.
Uh, again, this is a second reading for a comprehensive plan future land use map amendment. This is for 2050 58th Street North, uh, north of Roosevelt, uh, on the, uh, west side of 58th Street. Uh, the property is currently designated, uh, institutional future land use. Uh, it is proposed for residential low future land use to redevelop with single family homes. Uh, this came before the commission on May 5th, 2020. Uh, went to the, um, Ford Pinellas, uh, Board and the city countywide planning authority. It was heard by the countywide planning authority on July 21st, 2020. Uh, and is before you with a recommendation to approve. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Ordinance number 2020-17, an ordinance of the city of Largo, Florida, amending the city of Largo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Classification of the within described tract of land located at 2050 58th Street North from institutional parentheses I to residential low parentheses RL, consistent with the city of Largo Comprehensive Plan, amending the city future land use map on file in the office of the city clerk pursuant to the provisions of chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes and the Pinellas Countywide Plan Rules, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, do we have any public input?
Uh, we have no public input.
Any questions from the commission?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2020-17 on second and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Press for filling in on that. Uh, next is item number 15, which is second reading of the charter amendments.
You're up, Alan.
I can go ahead with this one. This is second reading of ordinance number 2020-44. Um, it's the charter review questions for the November ballot. There will be two questions on the ballot. One is an amendment to section 2.12, referendum approval for leases, which proposes to change the lease term from five years to 10. And the other question is regarding section 9.02, regarding the convening of a charter review committee and the proposal is to change that from 10 years, I mean, I'm sorry, from seven years to 10. Ordinance number 2020-44, an ordinance of the city of Largo, Florida, submitting to the city electors proposed amendments to the city charter, including a proposed amendment to section 2.12 regarding referendum approval for leases and a proposed amendment to section 9.02 regarding the convening of a charter review committee, providing for a referendum election and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, do we have any public input?
I see no public input. Oh, no, that's not a hand up, sorry.
Any questions from the commission?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2020-44 on second and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next is resolution number 2275.
Now I'm gonna guess everyone can hear me 'cause I can see you. Good, thank you, Mayor. This item before you is a resolution to reduce specific building permit fees, uh, for a period of six months. The goal of reducing the permit fees is to stimulate economic recovery to the citizens of Largo, property owners and businesses. Uh, this is due to the impacts of COVID. The first three months would be reduced, uh, at a reduction rate of 50%. The next three months at 25%. Uh, this reduction would start with projects in excess of 1, $12,000, so $12,001. And because this would have the, uh, greatest financial impact and benefit to the city's economic recovery. So that's why that number was picked. Uh, the projects that are from the zero to $12,000, uh, based on building division, operating expenses and cost recovery, these were not added to this, um, reduction in fees. And with that, if you have any questions, I'll be free, uh, glad to answer them.
Resolution number 2275, a resolution of the city of Largo, Florida, temporarily reducing certain building construction permit and inspection fees, providing an effective date and an expiration date.
Thank you, do we have any public input?
Just checking, I see none.
Any questions from the commission?
I move to approve resolution number 2275.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, it's a great idea. Moving on to, uh, next item is ordinance number 2020-31.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. This is ordinance 2020-31. It's a proposed amendment to the city of Largo Code of Ordinances. Staff initiated ordinance number 2020-32 to amend the Comprehensive Development Code to consolidate standards and regulations for portable storage containers. That's the next item on the agenda. This amendment to the Code of Ordinances is intended to repeal those standards and redundancy in the regulations of portable storage containers. Staff presented the proposed amendments at the City Commission Work Session on May 12th and Community Development Advisory Board on June 29th. The proposed amendment is scheduled for second reading on August 18th, concurrently with the next agenda item, which is the companion CDC amendment. Staff is available for questions.
Ordinance number 2020-31, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Largo, Florida, amending chapter 11 environment, article 3 outside storage and parking of certain vehicles by amending section 11-73 of the city of Largo Code of Ordinances by deleting the definition of portable storage container by repealing section 11-81 of the city of Largo Code of Ordinances and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, do we have any citizens comment?
Checking, no, I see none.
Any questions from the commission?
I move to approve ordinance. I'm, I move to approve ordinance number 2020-31 on first reading and scheduled a second reading of public hearing on August 18th, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, next is, uh, ordinance number 2020-32.
I have a presentation that I'm sharing for this one. Okay, hopefully you can see that. Ordinance number 2020-32 is a proposed amendment to chapters 16 and 20 of the Comprehensive Development Code in order to consolidate standards and regulations for the temporary, permanent and seasonal accessory use of portable storage containers. Portable storage containers are portable structures used for incidental and accessory onsite storage contents for a variety of reasons, including moving household contents between residences, delivery and unloading of commercial merchandise and storing construction equipment and industrial materials. Current regulations to address size, quantity, duration and placement of these containers are split between the Comprehensive Development Code and the city's Code of Ordinances. In September 2019, the city commission adopted resolution number 2246 to temporarily allow conditional approval of seasonal outdoor storage for big box, large footprint retail stores. That temporary approval has expired and staff is proposing revisions to the CDC to address temporary permit, temporary permanent and seasonal accessory use of portable storage containers. This will include specific standards for big box retail as seen on the slide. Concurrently, staff is seeking to propose amendments to the Code of Ordinances as a separate agenda item which you just heard. This item was presented at the city commission work session on May 12th to the Community Development Advisory Board on June 29th and was recommended approval by the planning board on July 2nd. Second reading is scheduled for August 18th to be concurrent with the last agenda item. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 2020-32 and is available for questions.
Ordinance number 2020-32, an ordinance by the city of Largo, Florida, amending the city of Largo Comprehensive Development Code by amending chapter 16 and chapter 20 to establish regulations for permanent, temporary and seasonal seasonal, seasonal portable storage containers as an accessory use, providing for applicability, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, do we have any, uh, public input on this?
Do not see any, let me just check. No, I have none.
Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Holmes.
Thank you, Lisa, question for you. Uh, lately we've seen these, they look like inflatable tents that people are storing cars in basically. Does this have any effect on that? I mean, we've got a couple of them in the neighborhood, I think they're inflatable, they look like they're inflatable, but I haven't gone on private property to really give them a close examination. But this is, there's several of them around here and I don't know what effect this may have on them, if any.
I don't believe, so this wouldn't cover those, uh, it sounds almost like those are some, uh, sort of carport structure or?
It's like a carport.
Okay, so that is something, um, that wouldn't be encompassed by the portable storage container standards um, as of right now, but that is something we can explore. I haven't seen those myself, so I'd have to take a look to see.
They're not pretty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions?
I move to approve ordinance number 2020-32 on first reading and schedule the second reading of public hearing on August 18th, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero, next up is ordinance number 2020-37.
Okay, um, this is the proposed future land use map amendment, uh, for 4825 East Bay Drive. That you had heard the development agreement for earlier on in the agenda. Uh, the site is located, um, on the south side of East Bay Drive, east of Newport Road, west of Bedford Circle East. Uh, it is approximately 4.34 acres. Uh, it is currently, um, occupied by the Our Savior Lutheran Church. It is designated institutional. The proposed change is for residential office retail. Uh, the residential office retail designation Uh, the residential office retail designation uh, is described generally as appropriate to locations where it would serve as a transition from an urban activity center or more intensive non-residential use to residential office or pub, uh, public semi-public. Uh, and it offers a mix of residential office and, uh, retail uses. Uh, the areas are typically in close proximity to and served by an arterial road, in this case, uh, East Bay Drive. Um, and they are, uh, encourage a mix of uses that would allow for interaction between uses and encourage mass transit uh, and non-vehicular trips in proximity to adjacent residential neighborhoods. Um, this was presented to the Planning Board on July 2nd, 2020, uh, and recommended for approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 37, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Classification of the within-described tracts of land located at 4825 East Bay Drive from institutional parentheses I to residential office retail parentheses ROR, consistent with the City of Largo Comprehensive Plan, amending the Future Land Use Map on file in the Office of the City Clerk pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 163, Part 2, Florida Statutes and the Pinellas Countywide Plan Rules, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any public input?
I have no hands up for this one and no emails.
Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Smith.
Uh, Rick, this question was probably for question, uh, agenda item. Why did we leave it open for a gas station? If we're saying that the restrictions, um, say no gas station.
Uh, so the development agreement that you approved earlier does not allow for a gas station. Uh, the applicant, uh, did present a variety of concepts and they had, uh, later in the discussions disclosed, uh, an interest in possibly marketing for a gas station. Um, the development agreement only acknowledges the fact that they, um, would have to come back through the typical process to amend the development agreement if in fact they were to propose a, uh, a gas station. So as it is now, the development agreement, um, one of the restricted uses is a gas station. And I believe the applicant is, uh, present in, in the meeting.
I, I do have a follow-up. Are they gonna come back with this? Or are we just basically pushing it out? The gas station?
So if, if they were to come back with a gas station, they'd have to bring to us a, an actual, uh, site plan with a gas station. We would have to come back to the commission and ask the commission, uh, to move forward with amending the development agreement. So this current development agreement that was approved does not allow for a gas station. It was based on the applicant's, uh, request. They just simply wanted us to acknowledge that through the typical amendment process, uh, they could, um, in fact, come back and ask the commission to amend the development agreement for a, uh, a gas station.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. What, uh, what is, what is the timeline on that, um, development agreement? As far as how long? Understand there's a, the future land use change. How long, um, would they have to, would they be bound by the development agreement and have to come back to put something like a gas station there?
Uh, so the duration of the agreement is, uh, a period of 20 years.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes, did you have a question?
Yeah, hey, I, Rick is Brian there.
Uh, he did, uh, inform me that he would be viewing the, uh, the presentation. So if he wished to speak, he'd have to raise his hand, I believe.
I don't know if he can. Can we see him or is that out of the question?
Mr. Unx is the, uh, the legal representative for the applicant. And, um, and my brief discussion with him, uh, prior to the meeting, he said that they would be viewing it. So I, I did no way of telling if he's, if he's on this virtual meeting.
It's promoted him to panelist so we can speak.
This is Brian. Uh, we're here with Robert Pergolese and Carmine Lacanai, uh, I'm sorry. Uh, a representative of Paradise, uh, to, uh, answer any questions that you have.
Oh, go ahead. Brian, they've been asking about the gas station. What, what's the, the developer's opinion on that?
So far there's, uh, as, um, as Mr. Perez noted, the development agreement that was approved as item number 11 does not allow a gas station use. Uh, the developer had, uh, some interest in potentially doing a, a large convenience market, which would be a majority of non-fuel sales, but also potentially having some fuel sales. But as Mr. Perez noted, uh, that is not allowed, uh, based on the development agreement that the commission approved as item number 11. So basically, all that's recognized in the development agreement is that in the event they wanted to do a convenience market with fuel sales, they would have to come back through the normal, uh, amendment process, which first would require site plan, uh, review by the staff. The staff would determine whether or not an amendment was appropriate. And as you know, under your code, the development coordinator uh, has the final say on whether an amendment even comes to the commission. So there's no right of the developer to bring an application to amend the development agreement to the commission. Uh, the, uh, the community development coordinator would have to review it and determine that it was appropriate and supportable from a staff perspective. Um, so there are many, many hoops that would have to be jumped through prior to that use being allowed. And as we sit here today, uh, there's no intention of doing that at this point and there's no, you know, contract or anything like that that would lead me to believe that it's likely that we would be coming back to amend the development agreement at, at any point.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for either Mr. Perez or Mr. Unx?
I, I move to approve ordinance number 2020 dash 37 with DA 20 dash 001 and first reading and transmit the amend, the amendment to the Countywide Planning Authority and schedule the second reading after review by the CPA.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next up is item number 20.
Good evening Mayor and Commission. Um, ordinance number 2020 dash 40. Uh, first reading is to amend the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 11, Sections 1.1 and 1.3 to address the changes to the language prohibiting certain single-use plastics from distribution on city property. Um, the, um, adjustments were made after the March 10th, uh, Commission Work Session Discussion. And the adjustments that were made were one, um, allowing for vendors who donate food items to be exempt from the language in the, um, ordinance. And the second exception would be to allow private organizations that rent city facilities for public events to become exempt. Um, currently, private events, um, held by private organizations are already exempt. So birthday parties, weddings, things of that nature. Um, but this would also allow an exemption for, again, those private organizations that are holding public events. And staff is here to answer any questions.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 40, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending Chapter 11, Article 1, Division 1 of the City of Largo Code of Ordinances entitled Prohibition of the Sale or Use of Polystyrene and Polypropylene Food Service Articles and Bioplastic Straws by City Contractors and Temporary Vendors to clarify the definition of city contractor and temporary vendor.
Thank you. Do we have any public input on this?
I see no hands up. We have none.
Any questions from the commission?
I move to approve ordinance number 2020 dash 40 on first reading and schedule the second reading of public hearing on August 18th, 2020.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, me.
Motion passes six one. Thank you. And I, while, while you're here, could you tell us about, um, your sustainability series, please? That's coming up later in August.
Yes, absolutely. So on Saturday, August 29th, um, at 10:30 in the morning, we are going to be live streaming on Facebook the next in our sustainability series. Um, I'll actually be the presenter for this month and we'll be discussing climate change and local impacts of climate change and different ways that residents, businesses and visitors can, um, help improve, uh, future outcomes of our community. So we hold that series monthly and you can find out more at ourfuturelargo.com.
Thank you very much. I was, I was able to attend the last one. It was very well done. Commissioner Smith.
Can I correct my vote? It said no on that one. I'm sorry, my earring's going in and out. On that last one.
Sure, yeah. A motion, then motion passes five two.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Smith voting, uh, voting no. Thank you. Next up is item number 21.
Good evening Mayor, good me, good evening Commissioners. This is the first reading of ordinance 2020 45, an ordinance preventing the removal of brick pavement and granite curbing without public input and city commission unless exempted. There are four exempt, exemptions in this ordinance, which allows the city engineer to remove the minimum amount of brick curbing in certain situations. Uh, the first exemption would be for the Americans with Disabilities Act Sidewalk Ramp Compliance. The second would be an exemption to allow for the modification or installation of stormwater inlets, grates or other features to promote, um, effective, uh, stormwater system convenience. The third would be an exemption for the modification of any permitted driveway that needs a change in width, location or length. And the fourth one would be a modification exemption to allow for matching of brick along a corridor for crosswalks and, um, and intersection pedestrian crossings. Uh, staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 45, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, preventing the unauthorized removal of brick pavement and granite curbing without city commission approval unless exempted, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. And thank you. Do we have any public input?
We do not.
Any questions from the commission?
I move to approve ordinance number 2020 dash 45 on first reading and schedule the second reading of public hearing on August 18th, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next, uh, items from the commission. Mr. Zimmet, do you have anything this evening?
First of all, I just want to apologize to the commission for missing my item. Um, having a little bit of a family emergency and had a phone call uh, from a family member. So, uh, just also want to thank Diane for taking over for me there. So again, apologize that, uh, I missed my item.
No problem. Thank you. Uh, next is, uh, Commissioner Smith.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Finger.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes.
Henry, this is for you. Why isn't the county paying us for EMS in 38?
What they did was, is this year when they reviewed the, um, all the contractor-funded units in the county, um, our unit was one of the top-rated, uh, units, uh, to qualify for county funding. But the county made the decision that because of the uncertainties regarding their future revenue situation, they chose not to fund any additional units for this upcoming year. So, so they treated everybody the same.
We all got stomped on. Are, are we going to appeal their decision here? Or is this just cast in stone and forget about it?
At, at, I mean, if the commission directs us to, 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 um, to, to, you know, see what we can do with the county, we can. I, I think that based on, on, um, uh, the current situation, they would be highly unlikely to, to fund our unit or any other unit.
So how much, how much extra is this costing us?
It's in the neighborhood of, i- if they were to fund, um, the, uh, paramedic position on the unit, it would be in the neighborhood of $400,000 to $500,000.
So this is costing us $400,000 to $500,000 extra when they, I guess they used to fund this thing.
Hmm, I don't believe they ever funded it.
Really?
Correct. We, we have one, the, the situation is we have, they, they do fund a paramedic position a- at that station. We have an engine company and we have a squad. Um, they fund, um, paramedics on one unit, but we feel the call volume is sufficient now to justify both units having a funded paramedic. We, we do fund the paramedic ourselves on the second unit so that we can provide a, a high level of service within that, our response area.
Well, I don't think. I wouldn't have any objection to filing an appeal with them. Just my opinion.
I think we're, I think we're optimistic too that, that once, um, things kind of clear up from the current pandemic, that will be one of the next, one of the units that they next, one of the next units that they fund. From my understanding. It's a high priority on, on their, on their funding.
That could be towards the end of the year then. Possibly.
Yeah, we're, we're towards the top of their list. I, I think their concern is, is that the, the, pretty much the only funding source for the MS system um, is, is the property tax. And I think they have some concerns that, that their revenue on that, uh, tax could be constrained, uh, in '22.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Commissioner Robinson.
Yeah, just a couple of things, um, wanted to say congratulations Mayor. Um, looking, very much looking forward to working with you for the next four years, uh, continuing to make the City of Largo, you know, the greatest city and art community of choice in Tampa Bay. Um, I also, uh, wanted to say happy birthday, Mayor. I believe you have a birthday coming up very soon. Um, congratulations on that as well. Um, lastly, um, Henry, uh, we received an email earlier today about a officer that, um, was injured, uh, in a, in an accident. Uh, do you have any update on that or?
Uh, no, I do not have any, uh, additional information. So since I haven't received any information, I'm assuming he's doing, uh, fine in the hospital right now.
Okay. I'm just, if you could just keep us updated on that or have the chief update us. And then lastly, thank you very much. And lastly, uh, just wanted to make sure everybody wears a mask and wash your hands. That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hulk.
Um, yes, I also wanted to offer my congratulations to, um, Mayor Brown and Commissioner Robinson. Looking forward to working with you all. I have two years and hopefully will be, hopefully will be four, but we'll see. Um, and also I wanted to congratulate the, um, campers on great job. Those were great stories, uh, great kids and it's good hearing good kids' stories nowadays. Um, also, thank you so much to, um, Cassandra Bernard and Kenzie Bell-Harrissey. Is that right? Um, I had the opportunity to, um, interact with them a couple of times over these last couple of years while they've been on our youth board. And I wish them both the best in their future endeavors and thank you for your service to, um, Largo and representing Largo youth. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Carroll.
Yeah, I'd also like to congratulate our good citizen campers, Aiden, Skylar, Tiffany, Philip and Amir. And I wondered if we might consider, um, sending their information up to the Florida League of Cities cuz that's the sort of story that our current president Isaac, uh, really enjoys about young people. Exhibiting the Isaac, really enjoys about young people exhibiting the traits that we wish that some of our other elected officials would exhibit, being kind and helping others and those sorts of things. So, great job by them. While I'm on the topic of the Florida League of Cities, I had a Zoom meeting last Friday with the nominating committee to consider the six candidates who are going for the two open positions on the first and vice, first and second vice president on the Florida League. As you know, our good friend Dan Saraki from City of Oldsmar is one of the candidates. We will meet again in a Zoom meeting on Thursday to discuss what we, what we heard on Friday, and then we will be voting on those positions on the 14th, you know, at the regular meeting of the Florida League of Cities. So, the only other thing I had is, I'm not sure everybody caught the article a couple of weeks ago about the sheriff's office and some other law enforcement agencies joining together to help each other out with officer-involved shooting investigations. It struck me in the article that the city of Largo wasn't mentioned when they mentioned the larger law enforcement agencies in the county. So, I reached out to the manager, and he informed me that we've decided to go a different route with use of FDLE to cover our shootings. Unfortunately, we had the chance to exercise that decision a couple, you know, shortly thereafter. But I just, it kind of bothered me that we weren't mentioned in that article, that we had made a conscious decision to go a different way. And I certainly support the decision. I think it was a good decision. But in case you missed it, or in case you might wonder how they arrived at that decision, I would suggest you contact Henry or even the chief if you want to know what their thought process was. Other than that, Mayor, I have nothing other than congratulations to you and Commissioner Robinson, and happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just wanted to say congratulations to Commissioner Robinson. Look forward to working with you for another four years. I, I wanted to mention in all of this pandemic, it's, it's, it's kind of unique to be able to listen to some live music, but we are having a summer concert series where you can sit out in the park far apart from each other on Saturday evenings. There was one this past Saturday, and there's one coming up next Saturday. You can find out who's playing on the city's website. Over that shoulder there is Largo Little League, and they're, they're signing up for fall ball. So, they're able to keep the kids, baseball's kind of interesting because they can be out, you know, plenty, plenty of distance apart from each other, and they keep distance. So, so, and they're playing baseball. So, Largo Little League is signing up kids for fall ball. So, I wanted to make that announcement as well. And I believe that's all I had. Mr. Schubert?
I have nothing this evening.
Action items this evening?
The only one I had was Commissioner Carroll's request about sending the good citizen campers bios up to the Florida League of Cities.
That'd be great. Thank you. If there's nothing further, meeting is adjourned. Have a good, have a good evening.